I'm holding it up. Good afternoon and welcome to Manatee Technical College, our temporary home for this month. I will call to order the workshop and executive session of the Manatee County School District School Board. And moving to the agenda, the Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the January 23, 2018 Agenda, updated January 19, 2018, and posted to the district website, www-manateeschools.net, and hopefully you will notice that it has a new look to it. Do we have public comments, Vice Chair? Having no public comments, we will move to an executive session, and I guess we're going to clear the room. Sorry about that, folks. Work settlements, I guess. Get a report or anything. Hello, did we lock you out?
No, I was waiting until, uh, you know, but thank you.
Thank you.
You can't break the seal after that.
Break the seal.
Penetrate the veil. That's a handful. Have we had any work from Mr. Cologne?
No, I don't even have his phone number.
Are we ready back with microphones and... Having concluded our executive session, we will now reconvene our workshop. Members, moving to item number two, a request for a joint meeting with Charlotte, Manatee, and the Sarasota School Boards. The purpose of the joint meeting, which I guess we've had a history of sometime in the past having this, the joint meeting would focus on creating a joint legislative platform for the 2019 session. And first, I guess, a discussion around the interest in us holding this joint session. Those of you who have done it in the past, I guess I would ask if you found it to be, you know, informative and of value?
I did. I've been, Mr. Chair, I may?
Yes.
I have been to one, and I... I not only found the content valuable, but Mr. Minor and I got a chance to tour their employee healthcare clinic, well, Charlotte County's health clinic while we were there. So not only was the board conversation useful, but so was just the campus visit.
Okay, Mr. Minor?
Well, I concur with what Mr. Kennedy just said. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Always one of my concerns is making sure that residents of Manatee County have the opportunity, you know, to be there, are informed, and if necessary, we provide some means of transportation if it's outside of Manatee County. What, I believe it's our turn to host.
That's my understanding. It's our turn to host.
Okay, so we don't have to go out and rent any bikes, I guess, for this one. What, so I'm all in favor of hosting it. Would we be doing it, is it suggested place of doing it here at MTC? It, the last time that we hosted it, I think we did it out on, I, off from university, if I recall correctly. That was more convenient for our friends coming up from Charlotte and also, you know, from Sarasota. I don't, I don't have any objection of doing that. I love it here at MTC, it's a little more convenient for us. I was wondering if Dr. Green had some suggestions along that line. Is my recollection correct, maybe, maybe it was Sarasota having it out there at, I think we had it at the Polo Grounds. I think, you know, Michelle over there's been around a couple times, and I think she confirms we had it at the Polo Grounds, and... Not, not the, anyway, that, you know, that restaurant that has a big, nice room.
Are you speaking of the Polo Grill?
The Polo Grill, yeah. I, I get my sports mixed up with eating sometimes, but I don't...
I was not on, I didn't think, I was not at that one. If there was one at the Polo Grill, I wasn't there.
I wonder from a strategic standpoint, you know, we record it and televise it, is it that more inconvenient to go out to the Polo Grill than having it here, or some other place?
The recording may be a challenge. The recording will, may be a challenge if we go to a location that our camera, our people have not normally been there several times to set up. I think we can find a location within the school district.
Yeah.
I just need to know number of people, and we'll work to get it set up.
You know, it might be nice to showcase Manatee Technical College.
You know, that, that's a nice factor, too.
Yeah, we have, we have the, you know, we have the, you know, the cafe for, for those services as well. So I'm hearing that we want to move forward. Is Charlotte, Mr. Minor, is Charlotte County School Board, are they in the Central Florida Coalition that you represent us on? They're not, okay, so that's good.
Neither is Sarasota. They, they don't qualify, they're not good enough to be in the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition, but it's all right to meet with them.
It's our own, our own...
I'm gonna get shot for that.
Mini coalition. All right, so am I hearing that there, there is a unanimous desire to go ahead and accept the invitation, and we would host?
Yes.
And we can work with the Superintendent? Probably this is, probably the best venue, it's, it's close to the interstate, we have all the services available here, it gives us an opportunity to showcase it both to the other school boards, but then also to the press. Okay. Do we have proposed dates from them, or are we supposed to propose dates? Okay. Let's assume we, we have a session that ends on time, which is the, around March 8th or something like that of, of this year. If we are strategizing a 2019 legislative platform, we're in the middle of a major election year, so committee meetings will not start until after the election, so they would have their organizational meeting towards the end of November, so, I mean, probably anytime in the summer or early fall would, would give us enough time. Any other suggestions date wise? Mr. Minor, you handle our legislative?
Mr. Chair, I think in the past, we've had these, you know, tri-county joint meetings in the summer.
In the summer.
And, you know, Mr. Kennedy was there, I remember a lot of rain, you know, driving down there. It was, we had some big storm.
Yeah, it did, it did, but my recollection was that was a school day, though, too. I mean, I could look on my calendar and tell you for sure, but...
Maybe, I, I had a feeling like it was in early August.
Early August, so late summer?
August 31st, 2016 was the last day.
Okay, August.
Okay, so that, that would allow us to work through our go-live date for our ERP, would allow July for that to settle down, and we start, we haven't adopted the school calendar, but we anticipate starting school when in August?
August 13th.
August 13th.
I, I think sometime around late August would be an acceptable date.
Okay. In the past, what day of the week did you hold it on?
Day of the week? Boy, I don't, I don't remember.
Any suggestions? So it's after the 13th, we'll, we'll be in school session?
Well, Tuesdays is usually a good date. It would maybe on, since we meet on the second and fourth, maybe on the third, you know, Tuesday? I, I don't know how that might work with other activities we have going on, you know, staff might, do we have something special on the third Tuesday?
It would be the second day of classes starting.
If we did it on the fourth Tuesday, then we have our, our regular meeting, that's... It doesn't have to be a Tuesday, maybe, maybe on Thursday.
I'm showing this, the third, well, it's not really the third Tuesday, you're right. So it'd be the 21st would be the third Tuesday, our board meeting is on the 14th. So the 21st would be the third Tuesday in August.
Can I add something?
Yes, ma'am.
If, if the last meeting was August 31st of 2016, that was actually a Wednesday, just wanna throw that out there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it might be better if we have it after we have our 10-day count, so we know exactly how many students we have, what we're looking at. Or does that not matter, Superintendent?
So that would put us in the week of the 27th. And we have, we have our board meetings and workshops on the 28th, so we can do the 29th.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would suggest maybe why don't we just leave like that two-week window open? That way the other counties can get back to us with feedback, because they may have conflicts that, we may nail down a date or two dates, and then it's automatically wiped out by then.
Should we leave it to Michelle to coordinate with them? Just sometime in August, I guess. All right. Mr. Lasada, moving on to the academic school calendars.
All right, good afternoon, Board members, Board Chair, and Dr. Green. Last time I was here, we discussed the changes for the calendar, and I think we all agreed upon some of those changes that MEA was wanting to be put in, and it changed some of the end dates, it changed some of the end dates for Semester One, and it changed some of those dates for the start of Semester Two. The only thing that I do not have information on is, I know there was a tentative piece for an MOU to move that day, has that?
No, yes.
That has happened, okay, I didn't see that, so, just wanted to make sure, because I moved the day in the draft, but I didn't want to move forward if we didn't have that, so. Thank you. So I can just go over those, on Calendar A, for the 18-19 school year, the only thing that changed would be the last day of school for teachers, that moved from a June date to the last day being the end of May, which would be May 31st. I know one of the items we discussed was the hurricane makeup days, and I put the hurricane makeup days on each one in the PowerPoint, and do you have a copy of my PowerPoint, I hope? Okay. So for Calendar A, you'll see the hurricane makeup days, if needed, are November 19th and 21st, through the 21st, and that's because we have the whole week of Thanksgiving off... And that's because we have the whole week of Thanksgiving off in Calendar A. So, any questions about Calendar A before I move to Calendar B? Okay, very good. So, on Calendar B, the last day for teachers moved as well. But if you look at the start of second semester, we now have the fourth as a part of the break. And January 7th, teachers would return, and January 9th, students would return. And the hurricane makeup days, and remember, that's going an extra day. We would have 88 days instead of 87 days. So, our hurricane makeup days, we'd have to use November 21st and December 21st. And I know that was a question we had last time.
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
Read that last part about the Calendar B hurricane.
So, Calendar, I'm on Calendar B for 18-19?
Okay, yep.
And what is it, I'm sorry.
Oh, if you could just restate that about the hurricane days, I just wanted to make.
The hurricane days would be November 21st and December 21st.
And, and B, in the B calendar?
In the B calendar.
Oh, that's, thank you, that's why I was confused. Looking at the wrong one.
So, so in the B calendar, the hurricane makeup day would be the day before Thanksgiving?
We're in school the Monday and Tuesday. Those would be school days.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Yeah, Dr. Green.
I think, Mr. Lasada, there are a few new people here. The big difference between Calendar A and Calendar B, in Calendar A, we have the entire week of Thanksgiving off.
That is correct.
In Calendar B, we are in school from Monday and Tuesday. So, that's why we are putting two calendars out, because we want to hear from our community. When we had the entire week off, Hurricane Irma required us to come to school on Monday and Tuesday. And we had high absentee rate. And so, the thinking was, well, maybe we should just put it out there that we're gonna be in school.
Right.
And then it would just be natural they'll come to school. So, just wanted to point out, those are the major differences between Calendar A and Calendar B. And this past year, we actually were out of school for six days. The state waived two of those days, and we needed to make up four. And as you know, we had to add two days, close down some early release days, add 10 minutes to the day to recoup that, because high school students have a requirement of a number, 132 hours of seat time for a year-long course. And when our, our courses are semester. So, Semester One must meet a certain number of hours, and Semester Two must meet a certain number of hours.
And we meet it with 87 days. We have 88 in Calendar B, and it's actually by minutes, 4,050 minutes they have to meet. So, there's only two days for hurricane makeup, and that would be the day before Thanksgiving, and that last day we have off before the break.
And, and if I recall correctly, in our, in our discussions at the, the last workshop around this issue, because of the, the sort of myriad, the, the absenteeism, both for students, for teachers, bus drivers, I thought where we were heading was towards Calendar B, where we, we scheduled Monday and Tuesday of the week of Thanksgiving for regular school days. And if we, you know, if we have to make it, if we have, have to have a makeup day, it would be that, that, the 21st. But we did not want to run into the situation, especially with our, with our high school seniors, uh, to, to be in a situation that we were in before. Any other final thoughts, comments, preferences?
I'm not sure I have a preference at the moment.
But I would, I am excited to hear what the community, um, has to say, because I agree with a lot of the points of what you're bringing up. But I think when we put it out there, we end up hearing so many other points of view that maybe we didn't consider. So, I, I really look forward to that.
So, we're ready to move to the?
19-20?
19-20.
Okay. So, again, the major difference between A and B for the 19-20 school year is the whole week of Thanksgiving as a break, or Monday, Tuesday, uh, school would be open. Some of the bullet points that I have, it, it changed the last day for teachers, 5:29. Let's see here. Schools closed, and the makeup days would be those days within the Thanksgiving week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So, pretty much the exact same thing.
Very, very similar.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I, you asked earlier about a preference. My, I, I've gotten just a little bit of feedback, and so, don't take this as gospel, but, um, my feel is that teachers and staff would prefer A with the week off for Thanksgiving. Obviously, that's up to us. And I, I think Dr. Green's concerned about absenteeism those two days. I, you know, I'd hate for that to be kind of like, you know, two days of half-full classrooms, but, um, so not only academically, I think we're better off with A, but I think as far as, um, again, I'm extrapolating here from just a few people, but I think the, the preference of teachers and staff would be to do A.
Alright, so then.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Minor.
Okay. I confess, I'm a little confused about Mr. Cal, Mr. Kennedy's remarks. I understand Calendar A is the one that would provide for makeup days during, um, you know, Thanksgiving. And whereas the Calendar B does not have days during Thanksgiving week as, as makeup days.
It has one.
Okay, maybe, maybe the 21st, okay. But the other has, 19th through the 21st is makeup days. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for pointing that out. I, I think that, um, Calendar B leaves Thanksgiving less violated in case of, uh, if we need to make up days. And so, I, I'm, I'm leaning toward that, but I agree with Mrs. Messenger, I think she makes a good point. Let's, let's put it out to the community and get their feelings about this, and their insights that maybe, uh, we, we don't have. And have that to combine, have that combined wisdom before we make any decision.
So, so for the purposes of our process, are, are we good with putting these out for public comment in this format? Are there any other requested changes, or, Mr. Cologne?
You can put it out for public comment, but I agree with Mr. Kennedy. Staff and the students are gonna opt for the full week off. I know I would, so, you know, I can live by what I see. And we get paid on headcount. We'd like to not see a lot of absenteeism. Because it doesn't do our students any good to not be present and miss work.
Sure, so my understanding from a procedural perspective, what, what we need to do is determine if, if we're comfortable with this going out for public comment. We'll take the public comment, and then we'll take action on it, I, I think, like in a, a month from now, I guess.
That's fine.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'm okay with that. I just had a, um, another side point. And this is just a, a minor detail, but, um, we have, on, on the calendar, we have references to religious holidays, which I, um, maybe I'm overthinking this, but I, I, you know, the Rastafarians and the Satanists will be coming next to say they want their holidays on the calendar too. So, I think we might be better safe than sorry to just leave it, leave religious references off the calendar. Just one person's opinion.
Mr. Lasada, I'm, I'm, there's a law that's swirling around my head related to these holidays.
Holidays, right.
Even though we have them in school, we must ensure that these are excused absences. And we just have them on here so that administration would know. If, if you're not aware, we, this is for that, their knowledge. Because the law states we must excuse.
Gotcha.
Students who celebrate these holidays.
Alright, any other further questions, comments regarding the calendar? Thank you for your work. This was a lot easier to read than the mental gymnastics before. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, our, our next item is number four. Dr. Green, would you like to introduce this?
Yes. Even though our item says Ms. Jane Dregger, Director of Capital Projects, and Mr. Mike Penley, Executive Planner, they're gonna provide an update on the proposed property swap in Lakewood Ranch. Mr. Penley will come forward to do the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Good afternoon, board members. I'm very excited to be able to stand here and present a proposal to you today that we, staff, has been working on since March of last year. And I think you're going to really like where this ends up. So, the concept here is trading property with Schroeder Manatee Ranch, or SMR. You'll hear me refer to SMR. It's basically Lakewood Ranch. So, this area is in eastern Manatee County, and let me help orient you a little bit. This road here is State Road 70. You have State Road 64 to the north. The east side, I'm sorry, the west side of this is, uh, Lorraine Road in the east side. This border over here will ultimately be Bornside Drive. It is not constructed yet. That also happens to be what Manatee County refers to as the future development area boundary. That's very important, because what that means is they have drawn a line in the sand and said, there are no public services expected to go past that point, at least in the foreseeable future. That means that any schools that we build need to be on the left side of that line, so that we can have water and sewer service to our schools. To help orient you a little bit more, I'm gonna step over here where I can see this a little bit. This is Lakewood Ranch High School. You have Gallant Elementary right in here with the new middle school that we're getting ready to build. This is Nolan Middle and, and McNeil Elementary. And, uh, that is Lake Manatee right there. What we are proposing is to trade property that we own currently, that we acquired from SMR back in 2007 and 2008, that is north of State Road 64, it's right up in this area. And we're proposing to trade that for property that's south of 64, and bring it closer to the residential areas. We're gonna talk a lot about that in a moment, show you what type of impacts this has. But basically, this red area, that is the high school site that we currently own. We're proposing to bring it down to this area between State Road 70 and 64. We also have a middle school right up here that's in blue. We're proposing to take it to a K-8 that is just south of 64, near what would be the extension of Bayside Drive, which Bayside is the church that's out there, rather large church. Finally, we own a transportation annex up here, or a bus depot. We're not proposing any trade on that, because in the future, the area around that will most likely be developed as commercial or light industrial. So, that's an appropriate place right there. So, this area that's shaded in orange, that is about 10 square miles. And it's known as the northeast sector or northeast quadrant development or regional impact. It's all owned by Schroeder Manatee Ranch. Okay, this property here was another DRI. This was a DRI, this was a DRI. Development's or regional impact. You can see they're all developed. This one, this aerial is not quite up to date. There's a lot more developed in this area than what you see on there. So, this is their last big piece of property moving east. Again, it's about 10, uh, 10 square miles. So, the property that we have north of State Road 64 was acquired 2007 and 2008 through two separate transactions. We acquired three properties. The high school, that's shown here in blue, the, uh, middle school in green, and the orange is the transportation annex, which we're not proposing any trade on. You also notice that there is an area that's outlined, and it's in black, uh, comes right through here. And then there's another area right here. That is right-of-way. What that means is it is, it was, uh, given to us when we purchased those other properties, specifically to be used for the construction of county roads. Okay, so, it's of little value to you other than getting to your site, because these sites, for the most part, don't front on State Road 64. So, as I mentioned, uh, we've been meeting with representatives from Schroeder Manatee since last March. We've had a series of meetings and negotiations. We've gone through numerous contracts, and, uh, in the near future, I hope to be presenting a contract to you. That would most likely be late February or early March. So, when we approached them, this was initiated by the district, and we said, we would like for you to consider trading property with us, so that we can locate our schools closer to the residential development that's proposed in the area. You see, when we acquired those properties in 2007 and 2008, the picture out here wasn't very clear. This was all just undeveloped property. So, we took our best guess, but we can do better than that. Because now, the northeast sector is approved. This is the exact same area that you're, you saw on the previous slide, 10 square miles. It is approved by Manatee County. Schroeder Manatee received approval, comprehensive plan approval for 10,972 dwellings there. So, call it 11,000 dwellings, substantial. That wasn't approved when we acquired the other property in 2007 and 8. So, as we started looking at what's going on in this area, we said, gosh, this doesn't make sense to locate our schools away from this development that will be significant for this area. So, Schroeder Manatee agreed that it would be in everyone's best interest to consider a trade. And we have, uh, we have, for the most part, reached agreement on that. The other thing is, I would tell you that they own some property beside our schools up north of State Road 64, or beside the school sites, but they have no approvals up there at all. So, there's nothing proposed. Now, a couple of things here I just want to point out. The areas that you see in black, okay, which is a lot of this, that's all sold. That property, even though it's not developed, it's gone. It has been sold, and it will be developed as, for the most part, residential. There'll be some that's developed as commercial. The area that's peach-colored, well, those are not sold yet. That doesn't mean they're not in, in discussions for contracts. The areas that are yellow will be roadways that Schroeder Manatee will build. And then, uh, you see some area that's not shaded at all, it's green. Well, those are, those are wetlands, that won't be developed. Then you see the two sites that we're talking about. This would be the K-8 site, that is a 60-acre site up there, and we will select 40 acres of that, and I'll explain that to you momentarily. The other site, the high school site, is down here. And just so you know what some of the neighbors are down here, you've got a church, you've got a fire station, you've got a post office, and you've got, um, one of Schroeder Manatee's, uh, it, it's, it's like one of their headquarters right. Uh, it, it's, it's like one of their headquarters right there that they use for their district. Then there's right here, that is the premier sports campus that the county just purchased. So we would be located, uh, near that. So let me give you some details of the draft contract. First of all, it, it's a very simple concept. Our intent is to trade a high school site north of 64 for a high school site south of 64. Trade a middle school site north of 64 for a, a K-8 site south of 64, again, closer to the residential development. Bus depot, we don't touch it. Stays just like it is. It's in the appropriate place. One of the, through, through all the negotiations that we've had, we've agreed on due diligence periods and what will occur during due diligence. But one of the things that we got included in the contract that will be presented to you if you elect to move ahead is that the land that you receive, the school board receives in trade, must be appraised at a value higher than what you trade away to them. Otherwise, the deal's off. So it's a protection for you. There won't be any monetary exchange. It's even trade. There's no impact fee credits. There's no escrow. It's a piece of property for a piece of property. I mentioned to you that the K-8 boundary had not been defined yet. We generally know where it needs to go. But that site I showed you was 60 acres. The contract says during the feasibility period, which is, I believe, 120 days, we would select 40 acres of that 60 acres, and then we would define, that would be our defined K-8 site. The high school boundary has been, uh, for the most part, determined. And, and I need you to follow me here because this is a little unusual. What you see here, this will be Rangeland Parkway. It will be a four-lane road. It's not constructed yet. 59th Avenue is constructed south of the site. And, uh, this will be, uh, this is Post Road running north and south. The area that you see that's crosshatched leaning to the right, that is what we call the primary high school site. That's 82 acres. Put that in perspective, most of our high school sites are around 90 to 100, right in there. Okay, at least the newer ones. So that's 82 acres. The additional site that is shown with crosshatching going to the left is another 18 acres. That is an option, uh, optional piece, a secondary piece. So during the feasibility period, if we determine that we need more acreage, we can, we can elect to take the option on that property to give us a total of 100 acres at no additional cost. There's no impact fee credits. There's no money changing hands. Same deal. So we either get 82 acres, if that's enough, or 100 if it's not enough. This also gives us access to a number of roads. Rangeland Parkway, Post, 59th, and if we accept this 18 acres, also out to Lorraine Road. One of the features about this contract would be that we would complete our due diligence within 120 days or shortly thereafter. And if the school board elects to move forward with the deal, then we sit on the contract. It doesn't close. Probably won't close until 2019. And that is because Schroeder Manatee is going to come through and build all the roads, all the water, and all the sewer to these properties. No expense to us. That's significant, and I'll show you why in just a minute. So how does this break down in terms of acreage? Well, I provided you two tables here. I will be very clear with you. I do not agree with the first table. And I'll explain that. These are identical except for one thing, consideration of the right-of-way. In the first table, you can see that for the high school, we currently own 91 acres. And after the trade, we would have 82 acres. Or, remember, there's the optional piece, which is another 18. So we would either have 82 or 100 acres. So we'd either lose nine acres or gain nine acres on that site. On the middle school, we currently have 30 acres. The new middle, or new K-8 site would be 40, so we gained 10 acres. The bus depot, not part of the deal. It, it's, it nets out at a zero. Okay? But here's what I don't agree with in terms of how we think about this deal. There's 21 acres of right-of-way up there on our current property. Again, it's really of no use to you other than to build roads on to access the schools. Once you build those roads, you would be required to dedicate that to Manatee County. So it comes out of your ownership anyway, after you build the roads. But I wanted to show you this to be very transparent. So the 159 acres that we own would end up being, or 139 or 157 acres, if you include the right-of-way. Now, let's look at it without the right-of-way, which, to me, is the appropriate way. Again, because you have to dedicate that right-of-way to Manatee County. And in the trade that's proposed, Schroeder Manatee, they own all the right-of-way, they build all the infrastructure, and they dedicate it to Manatee County. Okay? So it's the exact same acreages without the right-of-way. And what happens there is you're, if you take the right-of-way out of the equation, we currently own 138 acres, and we would end up with either 139 or 157 acres. So you'd have a net gain of either 1 or 19 acres. In either instance, you end up with more property. And I will tell you that the property that we are trading on, in my experience, is going to be valued significantly higher than what we are trading away because it will be appraised as developed property because all the roads, water, and sewer will be in place. So, let me finish up by telling you some of the benefits and a couple of the cons that we, that I have with this. A big one, the school sites will be near the residential area. That's a great concept. That's what we should be doing. The residential areas here are not built, so we can get in beforehand and get some preliminary approvals from the county. So everyone's on notice that schools are coming. And it's not a big surprise if they buy next door. One of the things that concerns me greatly with almost 11,000 units being developed south of 64 is many of those students will walk. And they'll have to cross State Road 64. That is not a good scenario. I live out in this area. It is not a good scenario. This takes that off the table. So those students now, if they're crossing a road, they're more local roads or collectors instead of a, a major arterial that has a 60 mile-per-hour speed limit. Additionally, because we're moving the schools closer to the residential areas, our transportation cost will be reduced. Remember, we don't bus within a two-mile radius of the school. So a lot of those students would now be within that two-mile radius, whereas before, we would have had to bus them across the, uh, across State Road 64. This is a big one right here. The, the current property that we have would require significant improvements. And it was all planned in this way. For example, there is about 6,500 feet of roadway internal to that property that would need to be built. That is, that black shaded right-of-way I showed you, about 6,500 feet. Then if you opted for the secondary access, that's another 1,500 feet. So you're talking a mile and a half of county-level roadway that, right now, we're responsible for. Also, we would, on the existing property, we would need to extend sewer about 8,600 feet, a mile and a half. Water, 5,100 feet, a mile. So there's substantial cost associated with that. In addition, there is no way DOT is going to let us put a school on State Road 64 without putting in significant improvements on 64 for axle and decel lanes and a traffic signal. Now, I haven't put pen to paper because it's kind of hard to do that right now. But I can tell you, that's worth multi-millions of dollars of commitments that the school board would currently have that you're going to be released from because with this trade, S M R is going to put all those improvements in place adjacent to the property. What are the cons? There's really not a lot. Depending how you look at it, if you include the right-of-way or not, the acreage could be less in the trade. But again, I, I don't think that's a fair way to look at it. And finally, the property won't close immediately. It wouldn't close until all the infrastructure's in place. Therefore, you're guaranteed that roads, water, sewer are there to serve all of our sites. And I can tell you that in the five-year plan, even though this wouldn't close until 2019, there's nothing in our five-year plan that says we would be using these properties in that timeframe. In fact, I, you know, I don't want anyone thinking that we're getting ready to run, develop on these sites. This is an acquisition for the future of this district, not for use right now. With that, I'll end it and open it up to questions or discussion.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When you say it's not going to close, it would not close until 2019. I interpret that to mean there would not be the signing of deeds, uh, of the property. And, but it, I, i- is that correct?
Mr. Minor, there is so much feedback here. I'm really having trouble.
That's bad here, too.
If, if it weren't for the need to, to, to broadcast this, I mean, this, the, the, the acoustics are challenging.
Yes, yes. Okay. When it says that the closing would not be until 2019, am I correct in understanding that it is referring to the exchange of deeds?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And the reason for that is because we want to wait. Because I guess they could go in and, and bond all the improvements to make sure that they're going to be in. But since we're not in a real hurry to develop this property, and I, I can tell you that S M R is, they're already in design for all the roadways out in this area. That Rangeland Parkway, uh, every road that you saw on that, that 10-square-mile graphic, they're going to go in and build those. So let's just let them build it. We're assured that all the infrastructure's in place during the feasibility period. We'll show them where we need, uh, median cuts and things like that. And, uh, it will take them a little while to build that. So we anticipate it would be 2019 when we would close and exchange the deeds. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, along that same line, so I, I think that we're looking at this now because S M R, uh, would like to, at the very least, have some contract, uh, that they would, that, that we would be going ahead with this trade, at least at some time in 2019. Is that correct?
Yeah. On the, the graphic, let me go back to this. Well, this graphic right here, I think, will help explain that if I understood your question correctly. Again, everything in black is already sold. They're in negotiations on these other properties. So we have an opportunity right now to acquire these properties. And if we're not, if the board's not interested, they're going to move ahead. They got, they've got buyers. So that's why we feel it's important to go ahead and lock this up at this time. Then they know they don't need to be worried about selling those properties. Did, did that answer your question?
I, I think so. It sounds like, uh, we're talking about a contract that would say that, uh, the parties agreed to do all these things and to close and consummate this deal on or before something like May 1, 2019.
Yeah, I, I don't know the date specific. I mean, it's really, right now, it's, it's based on completion of the infrastructure. But I can tell you, uh, well, I shouldn't tell you that. There is a S M R representative here, and I do think they've, uh, they've been borrowing the money for those roads. Uh, is that, is that accurate, Richard? Yeah, yeah. If I could have Richard Bedford address that.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm trying to get it. We're, we're being, uh, we're considering, uh, at some point soon, uh, uh, reviewing and up or down approving a proposed contract. And I would expect that the proposed contract would have some on-or-before date as far as the actual, you know, closing.
Yeah, the, uh...
And I was wondering if they had some date in mind.
The contract, right now, we're, we're very close. I mean, we're like an hour from it being done. Okay, we're, we're really close. So that contract would come to you either in February or March. We would complete our feasibility, (cough) excuse me, feasibility. Feasibility period. And, uh, (cough) I'm sorry. And my wife says I talk too much. Thank you. And thank you. We would complete our feasibility period. We would finalize all the surveys, the title work and all that. And then we would close it in 2000, most likely 2019, when all the infrastructure's in. Is that...
Okay.
There's not a date certain for the closing.
Would, um, you know, State Road or, uh, well, 44th Street, you know, is being extended, I've heard, you know, at, at least to Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. And, uh, would that also, uh, be going, it would sort of dead-end or end at Lakewood Ranch Boulevard?
Uh, it, it would not be a part of this deal. The infrastructure we're talking about is just what's there to, to serve the sites.
Okay, I, um... We're, we're between Lakewood, you know, our, our elementary school, where some very fine people work, uh, out there between White Eagle and Lakewood Ranch. And we, we're proposing to put in our, uh, middle school, I think, next door.
Yes.
And that, which would be, uh, west of White Eagle, correct?
Correct.
And, um, and I, you know, the, S M R has great roads and great walkways and tunnels going under roads. And, you know, it needs to be, uh, Richard, you know, needs to be congratulated for that great planning. And, and I'm just trying to, uh, from these maps to, uh, get it clear in my mind. Uh, this p, this parcel, um, is, you know, east of White Eagle, correct? That's kind of the western boundary, almost, of what we're talking about?
Yes, White Eagle is...
You're talking that, the church is kind of at the base of White Eagle.
White Eagle's probably about right in here.
Okay.
So it, it would be off of this graphic.
Okay.
Which White Eagle will turn into Ry Road, uh, again, off of this, this graphic.
Okay, they, yeah, they're going to work on that intersection. I think they're probably going to have a circle or something else.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think that's kind of the plan. And, um, I, I, I guess I'm trying to visualize the, the road planning so we don't have, um, you know, a lot of jams out there. We're talking about adding a lot of homes in that area. And we're going to be competing with, for roadway, uh, with all the homes that are going to be going in there. And I, I guess that's not clear in my mind yet. What, uh, going up to the northern property, can you point out where Dam Road is on the, um, on the maps? There, there were some current concerns when this was, uh, when, when we first, um, you know, bought, uh, you know, this property in the north from S M R. There were concerns about, uh, the, the, the use of the property that might add pollution, you know, to Lake Manatee. And, uh, can, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, the, the property that we currently own, which is... Yeah, the property that we currently own, which is on this graphic, there is a lease-back provision.
Right.
Basically, a dollar-a-year type lease when we bought it for SMR. That, and some people say, well, you'll let them use it for free. But if you look at it on the other hand, we're not having to maintain it. So, we don't have to go out there and mow it, bush hog it, make sure that, you know, there's not people on it doing things that they shouldn't be doing. So, they've been using it throughout the years. They grow some crops on there, run some cattle. And the original contract for this property, and the way, when it closed, one of the provisions is that when they, when we get ready to use these sites, and they, we basically terminate their lease, and then they would have to come in and do an environmental audit, basically a phase one, to determine if there are any impacts that damaged the property. And if there was, they would have to remediate the properties. They're not aware of anything that's happened there. I've been out on this property, and they grow strawberries there, sometimes tomatoes. And it's pretty low-level stuff in terms of what would harm the property.
Yeah, basically, we haven't used it except to, you know, lease it for strawberries. Is that a fair statement?
Correct, yes.
They're good strawberries.
They are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Vice Chair Messenger.
I had one question. Mr. Minor kind of touched on it, and it was really just a question about soil and water testing, those types of things, and ensuring the safety of this land. And I don't know if that's, it's probably part of your due diligence period, that you do those types of things. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
Great question. It is part of our standard due diligence. We will go in and do a phase-one study, which is the minimum that you do. But we also always go beyond that, okay? We will do a limited phase-two and start going in and actually doing soil samples before they even have the phase-one done. What a phase-one study does is they walk the site, they review historic records, they interview people that have worked on the property to determine, is there potential of some type of a chemical spill? Was there a cattle vat? Was there a factory here? Or what, anything that could have polluted the property? And if you, if you find that there is, they call those recognized environmental concerns. Then what you do is you go in and start doing the soil sample test to verify whether or not it's probable. But we don't wait on that. Now, if we find some of those things in the phase-one, we will go around and test those areas. But regardless of that, we go in and start doing testing, soil testing, water testing on the property, just random, as a, just as a secondary precaution. But yes, that happens on every site.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Clone.
Okay, we're going to build a mile and a half of roads. And I appreciate the fact that Schroed Manatee's being pretty good to us, from what I can hear. In fact, they've been real nice to us. Is this going to be a two-lane or a four-lane?
Well, let me clarify. The roads that we would have to build are on our existing property.
I understand. Well, you said it was going to be on the right-of-way.
Yes, on.
So, it's a mile and a half, if I, unless I misunderstood?
Yes, it's about a mile and a half.
Okay.
It's in that black area right here.
I got that.
So, that would be, we would be required to construct it as a two-lane road. SMR owns some property around it. Depending how that was developed, they may expand it to a four-lane. But our, our commitment right now is two-lane.
Okay, is there going to be a median?
I don't know that.
Well, I think that would be necessary, you know, for schools.
But in, in the new.
And there'll be sidewalks, I would imagine.
Well, we're talking about the existing property, yes. But in the proposed, the property that's proposed in the trade, yes, there'll be sidewalks. SMR does sidewalks everywhere.
But, I'm not talking about SMR, I'm talking about us. We're the ones building the roads.
No, we're not.
We're not building the roads.
No, on the existing property, on that property right there, we're required to build roads.
Right.
On the new property that we're getting, there's the high school site, or, you know, the middle school, or the K-8 is up here. We're not building any roads.
Oh, I'm sorry, I understood. I understood we had to build a road.
Nope, they're building.
So, we're not building any roads.
So, I think, my understanding is the current holdings that we have, if we were to develop it and build the schools, we would have to build the roads. What I'm hearing is, in this land swap, one of the suggested benefits to us is that the land that we would be receiving in exchange for the current holdings, the infrastructure with regards to roads and access would be built by the developer.
That is correct.
Okay, and the county's going to maintain it?
Most likely, they would be turned over to the county, yes.
Somebody else would maintain it regardless?
Yeah, we're not maintaining it.
But that'll be in the contract?
Yes.
Okay. And you're going to do an environmental impact study?
Absolutely.
Okay. How close is this to Lena Road?
Five, six, maybe, I'd say six to seven miles.
Okay.
We have schools much closer, like Hale-Middle and Freedom.
Well, I've been out there a number of times, but I didn't know exactly how far it was, that's why I'm asking.
And it actually seems a little close to, like, the high school site. It seems close to Lakewood Ranch. But when you start looking, if you just go on Google Earth and start looking at the separation, Lakewood Ranch High School's closer to Brayden River High School than this school will be to Lakewood Ranch. And I believe, like, southeast is closer to Bay Shore. I mean, they're, you don't picture it that way because of all the traffic you got to go through, but as the crow flies, they're really pretty close. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Talking about closeness, this high school south of sixty-four, it would be how far close, or south of sixty-four, about a mile or a half mile?
It's easier to tell you how far north of seventy it is. I'd say it's a half a mile north of seventy. You're probably two, two and a half miles from sixty-four. That's, that's a guess. I mean, I'm within.
That sounds like a pretty good guess, about three miles separating sixty-four and seventy.
Yeah.
What, what I'm trying to get a handle on is, I think that if we ever do some redistricting of students, would some students, you know, come from north of sixty-four, south of seventy? And the safety of those students, I, and, you know, the traffic, the traffic going south and going north, the ways that we are going to facilitate that, to what extent? You know, I'm in love with these tunnels that Richard, you know, provided for. To what extent, you know, students, staff, you know, might be able to, you know, go under or, you know, the major roadways? And I, I don't know if that's possible, but it would seem, it would seem to cut down on traffic and maybe be, you know, safer if that were at all possible. I know they have that, you know, that tunnel under White Eagle.
Right.
And I think that's a great, you know, thing. I was just amazed. I don't know if somehow that gets worked into the plans or not.
It's something we can discuss. We have not had that discussion at this point, so I can't commit to that.
Okay, thank you.
To help frame this, I guess, Dr. Green, what is the ask of the board right now?
Well, it really is not an ask. It's, it's an information.
Just information, okay.
Staff is still working with SMR, and we would be bringing before you a contract to say, we want to make this land swap. And we needed you to understand what we were, where we currently are, what are the advantages and disadvantages of making the swap? And when we bring the contract before you, you have all the background information to make an informed decision of whether you accept that contract or not.
So, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
And comments to sort of help navigate this. While we're talking about sites, you were like a K-through-eight site and a high school site, what planning horizon are you working with or envisioning with regards to the current site and the proposed exchange site?
Let me make sure I understand your question. Are you asking when we foresee using these sites?
The planning horizon, are you looking five years out? Are you looking ten years out?
I think it's between the five and ten-year period.
Okay. And, and, and with regards to that, not having spent much time at the county zoning and planning, let's just take the five-year planning horizon. What does the projected number of households look between, let's just say, Lakewood Ranch High School and the North River High School? And with those projected households, where do these two sites fit in? And I guess what I'm getting at is, is I've heard in general where the locations are. We're talking about acreage. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is the decision analysis. Because I haven't, you know, I saw where the proposed exchange property has, it appears that it's got infrastructure in place, and you've got some roadways that are there. There is some community planning, and there's probably more construction. I think you said because the aerials were a little bit outdated.
Correct.
So, given the fact that we've got these three schools under construction, elementary or soon-to-be elementary, we've got the high school site works being done, and the middle school, where, where do, where does the existing site and the proposed site fit in with that five-year planning horizon with regards to a site analysis? Either there was, you know, sort of an analogy, or, you know, somewhat attributed to more of these students could potentially walk to these schools. And so, what I, but what I don't see, and it may be that we individually need to come and meet with you and kind of get our heads around the, you know, where these schools would be in relation to the proposed or the forecasted population growth from a number of household perspectives.
Okay. I'm going to give you an answer, and I'm not sure it's exactly what you're looking for, but I think it will help frame the thought process.
Okay.
I've got a lady that works with me, and she tracks every development in this county. She tracks when it gets approved, and on an annual basis, she knows how many units were developed in each development, and she removes those. So, she has a real massive database that shows where growth is occurring. And I rely heavily on her to project the future as to where we need schools. And I can tell you, it's not just for the county, it's for the cities as well. I remember during the North County High School hearings, I informed the county commission that just in the parish area alone, west of, sorry, east of I-75 and north of the river, there were over twenty-five thousand dwellings that were approved that could be built, that were not yet built. I don't have that number for this particular area, because we're not quite at the point of where we're ready to build on these sites. What I can tell you is, the area that I showed you in the northeast sector, there's twelve thousand dwellings. I live right off of Ry Road in Mill Creek. There's a number of large developments going in there right now. The piece of property that is to the east, sorry, to the west of the northeast quadrant, that's Central Park and White Eagle, White Eagle, White Trace, I think it's called White Eagle, that's developing still. So, there's collectively, I'm going to say there's fifteen thousand units right in this area that are approved. And, you know, that's without any hard data, but I, in my head, I can come up with thirteen thousand.
That's kind of what I'm, I mean, you know, having done planning for healthcare and other, like, facilities, there, there, there are concrete data projections, they're projections. And the further you go out, the less reliable they are. But if you're talking a five-to-year, five-to-ten-year planning horizon, there are sources of data where they take, you know, trends and things like that, and put it out a, you know, a geographic area down to the track and things like that. So, that's what I'm at, you know, to get an idea, you know, with regards to, you know, how we reached the decision and what drove it. And to ensure that, that in, into the future, you know, we're not, because it appears to be the right move, that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we then have to go look for land five years from now or eight years from now to the north, because that's where the population is growing at a higher rate.
We have student projection numbers that come out of each type of dwelling unit, and others variations around the county, depending on what the demographics are in a certain area. We use one flat rate just to kind of simplify it.
But would you repeat that? You just use a flat rate across the county to simplify it?
If it's single-family, it's this many students that will come out. If it's multifamily, it's another rate. So, we have, we have a variation for each type of dwelling. But we don't say Lakewood Ranch is going to produce point-three-three students out of a dwelling, whereas Parish is going to be point-three-one. We don't break it down that finite.
Okay, but you do, you do realize that there are data entities out there that can tell you how many five-year-olds you think, they think they're going to be in a particular geographic area?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that is all factored in.
Okay.
It's factored into the student generation rates. But what I will, will tell you is that I would, would love for the lady that works with me to have a workshop with the board. I think she would love to do that. She's done on a number of occasions. We project out for the five-year period and for the, up to the ten-year period. I told Dr. Green before this meeting, I said, just so you know, we're having some preliminary discussions on another elementary site in this area, because I don't think a K-8 and a middle school is going to handle what's coming.
So, perhaps what would be helpful is, each of us individually, during the interim, what I can do is schedule some time with you and whomever else, and we can look, I can, I can better understand the type of GIS system we have, and, and, you know, population plots and density plots, you know, moving forward into these planning horizons. And so, you can drop it right there. And I think, I think that may be a better picture for us than kind of what you have in this sort of preliminary presentation. Because without tying it to, you know, population density for K-through-eight students and high school students and things like that in the planning horizon, I think that would help us to visualize it.
And I understand that. And we do tie these developments into student numbers. So, and we also convert those student numbers to how many schools we need. It might be point-seven elementary, or, you know, so we go.
And so, in that process, what you're, what, am I understanding you correctly that based on all that data and those population projections for this specific geographic area, that would be, we would be looking at shorter time for transportation to the proposed site?
Yes.
And lower cost for transporting students?
Absolutely.
Okay. Does it make sense, members, to, over the course of the next few weeks, if you have additional questions, to work with staff to better understand? Work, Dr. Green?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll have Dr. Next, we'll have Dr. Sarah Brown, Chief Human Resource Officer, and Ms. Wendy Mangello, Director of Personnel. They're going to present support to offer an increase, or we will be bringing to the board for the 18, 19 school year, an increase in substitute pay. Their presentation will be basically to show the board where we are as it relates to substitutes, our substitute pay, the number of substitutes we are using, and the issues we are encountering, and our recommendation for the 18, 19 school year.
Ladies?
If it's okay with the chair, I do, Mike and Jane, before you leave, I do want to remind the board, four years ago, we had a master plan, a master board plan. Remember, we had a company come in and look at our entire school district to determine where our areas of growth, I think only Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Minor were on the board at the time. And from that master plan, we create, we had shared with the board, we're going to create these five-year plans because it went out to, I think they went, did they go out 20 years or 50 years? Yeah, 40 years. And we said, well, okay, let's pare that down and we'll go five, five. And so two years ago, we gave you the five-year plan. And then that five-year plan, we showed you all the student numbers of generated communities that were developing north of the river as well as on North State Road 64. And that's when we presented to the board the plan that we need the new high schools. We told you how many students are already currently being generated for this high school and what we project to be the number of students generating not only for North River, but also Lakewood Ranch and Brayden River, which at the time, both of those high schools were already over capacity. And that's what led to us moving forward with North River High. We also shared the number of elementary students that were being generated. And at the time, Mills was already at about 130% over capacity and why the elementary, we were recommending that location. As well as the middle school, we gave you that information. I know, so over year, you've, you might not remember these things. So this, that land. Yes, that, the land that was on State Road 64 was initially a part of that. But if, you might not remember, but we had the discussion that it was underdeveloped and that we would have to spend millions to put in roads, to connect a water and sewer. And there was a caveat, if you remember when that land was purchased, that if the district didn't use it, we actually were supposed to give it back. And so instead of that option, we said, let's look at another location, let's look at where all the growth is happening. And so we went back to that analysis. And so that is what's driving, when you asked that question. That is what drove to, okay, we know the growth is happening over here, but our land's here. We can, if they are willing to make this land swap, we would save millions in building of roads, transportation, and ensure that the schools are sort of near where the students are and where the growth is.
Now I recall, there was a reversion, a reversion condition that has to be taken into consideration.
I just wanted to share.
And that was four years ago, so maybe we can talk about whether that needs to be updated, given the growth may be even higher now, so. All right, ladies?
Good afternoon. We're trying to, we're getting a few tech, oh, there we go, my technical difficulties. Wendy Mangello and I would like to share with you some information about our substitute teachers, our recruiting efforts that we have, the qualifications and a pay analysis. We're hoping to bring to you in the near future, a proposal to increase our substitute salaries. And this is kind of the analysis as to why that, we believe this is an important part of, and necessary for a school district at this time. We want to share with you that we have a total of about 540 active substitutes right now. That is more than a 10% decline in the number that we had from 2015, just two years ago. We presented to the board about two years ago, when I first came on in 2015, about where some of these numbers are. So I wanted to give kind of an update of why this is significant at this time. We have 207, I mean, 2,766 active teachers in our count. And our hiring in a full year, 16, 17, because we haven't completed the 17, 18 year, it was 116 substitutes added to our pool of substitutes. And year to date, we're at about 105 as of January. What that means is that we're still falling short because we don't tend to hire as many now going into spring and going into the end of our school year as we would at the beginning of the school year. So how do we compare to some of our neighboring districts, Pinellas, Hillsborough, and Sarasota? Understanding that our closest neighbor is Sarasota and where a large portion of our substitutes are registered, not only with us, but with that neighboring district. I've highlighted for you, and in your packet, you'll see it's a little bit bold regarding Manatee being our first one and how it's broken down. You'll see that Sarasota, other than the last column is the average, but you've got Hillsborough, Pinellas, and then Sarasota. Sarasota is going to, you're going to see that they are significantly above salary rate than any of the other districts. However, we do fare quite well if you compare us to Hillsborough and Pinellas. The problem that we have is that Sarasota is being our closest neighbor and where most of our substitutes share their work. And because of that, if you look at the salary differential, it's about a 30% difference between what we pay and what Sarasota currently is paying. This was true two years ago as well. You'll also see that we are breaking it down so that not all districts, but Sarasota has a significant amount that they will pay in differentiating their salaries. The master degree, they're the only one of the districts that pay for someone who would have a master's degree considering others. Whereas certified teachers, Hillsborough does a specialty for that. And they're a little bit of an outlier compared to the other districts. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Wendy because she's going to prepare to share with you a little bit about what our hope is for the future of our salary.
Good afternoon. As Dr. Brown shared, the differential between Manatee and Sarasota is about a 30% difference. What we're looking at is to try to get there halfway. So if you look at our next slide, what we're proposing is that someone with a bachelor's degree, right now, we're paying $89 for a daily rate and change that to $100. It's a little bit above a 12% increase. Bachelor's degree for a Title I school. We differentiated the pay, the daily rate for Title I schools to $110. Those tend to be the schools that are hardest to fill with substitutes. And they are the hardest for people to choose to actually want to go and substitute at those schools. So we wanted to provide an incentive for substitutes to spend their time and their day there. An associate's degree would be from $69 to $89 a day. We employ long-term subs for various reasons, I'll go into that in a few minutes. But from day 21 to day 90, it went, it used to go up to $100. We're proposing $120 a day. And the long-term subpay from 91 to 180 would stay at 150. Our paraprofessional substitutes right now are paid at $9 an hour and we would increase that to $10 an hour, which is well above minimum wage. What this would look like overall is that the average cost over the past three years has been $3 million each year to pay for our substitute program. This would propose, this proposal would increase it 330,000 for the total cost. So each year would be an additional 330. And we have reviewed over the budget and it would allow us to, it would give us the room to do that and be able to support that change. So why do we need subs? And this is a pretty telling chart here. If you look, what we did is gathered data for the first three months of school. So that would be August to October. And at the very top, you can see that we compared from 2014 all the way up to current. Total from those three months in 2014 is 6,705. If you look at where we are today, year to date from August to October, we have filled, or we have had a need for 10,007 substitutes. That is a huge increase. If you, we break, we broke it down as to reasons why substitutes are needed. ATD is assignment to temporary duty, usually that's used for training. And the one that really struck us is, and it's very commensurate with what we're dealing with in our teacher shortage, is where you see vacancy. And if you look at 2016 to 2017, that is, it doubled in 2016 and tripled this year where we're using substitutes for teacher vacancies. So that is quite interesting information. If you, 2016 is when we started our, our teach, our school calendar actually started in August. So we had a fuller month. So that's why there's a little bit of a difference. But the 2,447 so far that we have used for vacancies is, definitely shows that we have a need and a need for substitutes. And now I'm going to have Dr. Brown talk about the fill rate and how we compare nationwide and where we've compared over the years.
So what does that mean, substitute fill rate? It means how many times when you have someone call in that they're needing a substitute, is someone actually filling that slot? So the substitute need daily is around 280. We have some days when we need far more than that, let's say 350. And there's days when we need about 200. We are finding that as we look at the average, the unfilled average rates run anywhere from 15 to 20%. What does that mean or why is there a bridge there? The bridge is there because not every position requires a substitute to go into the position. But of those that do, that's why we have some fluctuation on that. But our fill rate averages for this year, or 17, 18 to date, we are at about an 80% fill rate. So that means 20% of our classrooms, when they're needing a substitute, are not being able to find one to come to that classroom. Now, that does not mean that our students go unserved. That means that we have to find other resources within the school or within the district to help fill that gap. So I want it to be very clear, we don't leave our students without teachers and we're not, that's not what happens. But it does make it difficult on our schools when they come up with alternative plans to help cover when we're not able to fill every position with an appropriate substitute. The national average of filling is 85%. And that comes from one of the largest institutes that has information is Utah State University. They run a substitute teacher institute. And they've been gathering data for probably more than 25 years on this. And so if you take that national average and then you look at how the district was comparing just a few years ago, our fill rate was running much higher. So in 2014, we were at 91%. In 15, the average over the year was 87%. And in 16, it was at 88%. So there is a significant difference. Now, I will say that in looking at the data, there is also the factor that during those times, we were still looking at unemployment rates that were higher than they are today. It does have a significant difference in our education world when we have lower unemployment and you have more people going to work, there's fewer that are going to be selecting to come and do this type of work and we don't have as many people, that's just a fact. So with that in mind, we also want to share with you in our next piece, so we'll have Wendy come back again, and talk about where and when do we need our substitutes? And she'll go into a little bit more detail of some of the things she spoke of just a minute ago.
Typically, we need more subs on Mondays and Fridays. And, yeah. And also, there are times before and after holiday or a long weekend, we will see an increase of substitutes during that time. We use substitutes mostly more at our elementary schools than our, at our middle and high schools. Schools with higher special need populations or Title I status have the greatest need for substitutes and they have a larger number of unfilled positions. Having been a former principal of Title I schools, I can tell you on a daily, that was the first thing I would walk into is I would look to see who was out and what fill we had for our substitutes. Because it was important at that particular time that we got all of our classrooms filled. And it can be very creative. It can be sometimes splitting classrooms and splitting students and dispersing them amongst the team. So that increases your numbers in other classrooms. It could be pulling some of your resource teachers that are there for other reasons and they have to pull them into the classroom to cover. So it does get quite creative sometimes. And when you have multiple unfilled substitute positions, it does, it does create difficulty in the classrooms.
The last slide you have that we're going to share with you is, kind of highlights the, this was the full year. In blue, the bars that you see were the full year of 16, 17 substitute workdays. So this means how many days did the substitutes, if we talk about we had 540 substitutes in the pool that we pull from, what do they do? How many of them, how long do they work or how much is their time spent with us? The first bar shows that we have about 228, that in the year of 16, 17, we had about 228 that served us for about 10 days. So in other words, they come on, they're not, they may not be here, or they may just do this very sporadically or for a particular school that they always want to sub for. Your next group at about 124 subs was 50 days or more with us. So we had a group that, that's about their timeframe. And then we have, it gets smaller as we go on. We had 80 that were targeted to be, to serve the district more than 100 days. And then the last group were those that spent more than 150 days serving us. Now, the last two groups, and in some in the 50 days, but primarily in the 100 to the 150 days, when we have those vacancies that we said we had so many people that were filling, those are the folks that are sitting in those positions. Because those are the ones who, not all, because in some cases, somebody could just be, that they've dedicated, that's their job is to work with us. And so out of the 150 days, they're serving the district in a wide variety of capacity here and there. They may take a 20-day job or a two-week job, but typically, these longer timeframes are those that are helping us in those vacancy slots that we have. So I'm going to ask Wendy to kind of speak to the pink box or the red box that's kind of up there in the corner regarding what does it mean to be a long-term substitute and why we would look to pay those folks a little bit more.
So we define long-term substitutes as anybody who's working in a particular job, that would mean the same classroom for over 20 days. So that would be 20 days or more, and that's where we pay them more because they're now, at this point, writing lesson plans, parent conferences. They have a little bit more responsibility than they would in a day-to-day position. So the reasons for this, why do we need long-term subs? You know, we have, sometimes we have teachers that have to take family medical leave, maternity leave, things of that sort, surgery, illness, things like that. We have vacancies. As you know, we have a teacher shortage and oftentimes, the applicant pool is not very large. And so in order to fill that classroom, we have to have somebody fill in as a long-term sub. So this year to date, we have 102 long-term substitutes. Also, some of those substitutes are folks that did not meet their certification requirements last year. And they are waiting to meet those certification requirements, but yet we've kept them on in that position so that they can continue to have those relationships with the school and the students as they work on their certification. So that's the reasons for the long-term subs.
This kind of concludes where we are. As you'll see, I think it was our slide that was the, where it talks about proposal of the daily change that Wendy first spoke to you about that gives you the numbers as far as what we're asking for, or we will hope to bring forward to the, to the board. And we're looking, our, our proposal would be not for this year, but for the two in July, one of the new fiscal year for our, for the 18, 19 school year to move forward with this proposal. Is that's where we're looking to find our, our next group and see if we can make some significant change in the way we work with our substitutes. We're also, it's not on here, but I did want to mention that we're, we're looking at a plan to bring on our training to be an online product so that we can train our substitutes more readily and more quickly as we get people onboard. The state does require that, that, that is a must before you can go into a classroom and it, it's a wise thing. But it is something that we want to make sure that if there's, using our technology of today and there's some wonderful programs that are out there that we have vetted through a bit and are looking to bring that onboard as well so that we can get, get more people in at a efficient rate and not have them wait too long to come onboard with us. So, those are some things in the works and we'll take any questions you might have.
Mr. Rahnner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Substitutes are not represented by MEA, are they?
No, they are not unionized and they are not represented at this time by MEA.
Okay. Aren't paras represented by MEA?
The paraeducators who work for our district are, they are represented by MEA. That is correct. Teachers and paras are part of the MEA union with the districts.
Okay. On page four, you list paras. Yeah. And I guess you'd call these substitute paras.
There are substitute paraeducators. So, if a paraeducator is out, they can also have a substitute that comes in to help serve in that classroom.
My, my questions kind of go to, you know, how this meshes with our agreements with MEA? And the, how, how much do contracted paras get compared to what the substitute paras receive?
Are you talking about in their salary?
Yes.
There, I would have to, to look, but paraeducators' salary is, is above what we pay our substitute group. The sub, just like with the teachers, the, the paraeducators are paid at a higher rate of salary in their jobs than what this rate is.
Okay.
Even, even a starting paraeducator would be a, a higher rate than this.
Okay. I, kind of what I'm getting at is, you know, the nine to 10 bucks an hour is, it just kind of strikes me as low. And, but we don't want to, you know, top what a, a regular para, you know, receives. And I just.
Mr. Minor, you, you know, I, I wouldn't argue the point that it's low. I'm just sharing with you that we, where we compare with others, we are in alignment with what other districts pay there. Even if they do, not every district uses paraeducators as a substitute. So, we actually are a little bit above some of our other counterparts because they don't always allow for substitutes in the paraeducator field, which we do. But we are in alignment with where our other counterparts pay when it comes to, to the paraeducator.
For, forgive me, I, I did not, I didn't see data on that comparison with paras. Is it in here and I just overlooked it?
No, we did not provide that for you today, but we can.
Okay, thank you.
The hourly rate for a starting para professional is 1157 an hour. That's our, that is our salary schedule from where we started out this year. And your other question was about, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, how we use our para professional substitutes. Mostly, they're used in our special education classes. We rarely have para substitutes in, you know, for our regular education paras. We really use them in those high need, need areas in ESE when they need more supervision.
Thank you.
I'm just going to throw this out there, but, you know, I agree with Mr. Minor. I mean, how do you expect to hire paras if you pay them less than they pay them to stack groceries at Publix? I mean, you know, there's a shortage in the labor force now. I see for hire signs all over the place. If they're not represented by the MEA, why don't you pay them a little more? Another dollar at least.
We can certainly look at the statistics. The issue that we run into is you, we have to be cautious about how we're paying someone that is a regular employee and those that are coming in as substitutes for that purpose. We certainly can look into where they are. These, we, although we did not, and you're right, Mr. Minor, we didn't share with you the paraeducator same validity of where they fall compared to like, as we did with teachers. But I can tell you, we, we do have the data and that, that other districts, if they are using paraeducators as substitutes, that their rate is, we are competitive at the $9 rate even at this point. So, I'm just sharing with you that minimum wage in the state of Florida is $8.10. And so, where we are at $9 is above minimum wage and $10 would be almost, you know, it's a $1.90 above minimum wage. And you are absolutely right. I, I don't make any bone, I, I'm fine with that. I'm just sharing with you that it's difficult at this point to, to find folks that are, as you mentioned, that are, that are going to do that. Those folks that are at your grocery stores and all oftentimes are working those so they can get benefits and those kinds of things. Whereas our para, our substitutes are not, do not qualify for any kind of benefit.
That's another reason you can pay them a little more because they don't have a benefit package.
Well, you know, could you, you offered, I'd like to see the, the information about paras like you ever.
Certainly, we can pull that information and give you the comparison.
Don't get me wrong, I don't expect you to pay them like teachers, but, you know, come on, $9 an hour? My guy who throws newspapers makes more than that.
You know, I, I, I think you're right. And I think one of the points that they've made in this presentation, this is probably a, a good example of, of how we need to be competitive with what Sarasota was paying. Because basically, you look at this as one market area. And, and that's probably where we need to target. In addition to the additional information that, that Mr. Minor is requesting, do we, or have we looked at a, a long-term OPS position for some of these unfilled positions where we may have teachers who are, are not, they may be sort of semi-retired, they be certificated in another state, but not here. They qualify as a teacher, they may not need benefits. Have we looked at, 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 at offering a, a sort of long-term OPS position which would be benchmarked against a, a teacher's salary, but without the benefits? And, and to see if we could get on these long-term, you know, unfilled positions, if we could not create a category where we, we, we create, you know, a long-term OPS position where they would go in for a semester or in some cases, maybe even a year, very qualified, experienced, you know, teachers who just may not be, you know, have a certificate in Florida, may not need benefits because they either get them through a, a spouse or something like that as a, a, an opportunity to fill these long-term positions with perhaps higher qualified people as, as one. And then, in your, 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 your fill rate for 2017, 2018, we have, we have unfilled rate averages from 15 to 20%. And then we have filled rate averages at 80. So, does that mean the filled rate averages could be 80 to 85? Like the unfilled is 15 to 20?
As I was explaining, not all unfilled positions are required to have a substitute in them. So, there's a bit of float, if you will, in between those numbers. That's why, for example, if you have certain ESE classes, you wouldn't have, there isn't a requirement for them to go back in if they may. Or be out for a day or a specialist that's out for a day, you wouldn't necessarily have a fill, but they, it would show up in the system.
Okay. And so, yeah, I would, I would like, you know, to, to, you know, maybe at a later meeting, just thoughts around a long-term OPS or a, a permanent sub that is a long-term OPS-type position.
Dr. Hope, could you qualify when you're saying OPS, what you're?
It's, it's like a, it's a state employment term for, for someone who is, is really like in a regular position, but they don't get benefits. It's, it's, it's a state government term. I don't know what we call it here, but that's, that's what it is. It's, you, you get a salary, you're just like a regular employee, except you don't get benefits because it's, it's either a position that doesn't have an FTE budgeted for it, you know, much like what, what we're doing here with substitute teachers. It's not really an FTE that's budgeted, although in some cases, they may be filling a budgeted FTE.
Yes. And we do, we, we can bring you some information that some of our long-term positions that we're speaking of do meet that same qualification that you are asking about. And we can share with you some of those that are long-term. For example, as we mentioned, no substitute's getting the benefit of having benefit.
Right.
Right now. And you do have some folks that are working towards or have, in the state right now, we have a general knowledge exam that tends to be difficult for some folks to pass. There's a timeframe for which they must get that done. And these are some of the folks that we're talking about that are, have a tentative certification that they're working towards trying to fulfill that requirement. And they're in those positions as in kind of interim. So, they meet kind of what you were just discussing. On occasion, we'll have a retiree. Oftentimes, to be honest, because of the teacher shortage, we want those people in as a full-time teacher.
Right.
And not as the substitute. If, if we can, we try to hire them. If, if we had extra people just out there, we'd be more than, you know, we'd be open to trying to get people in, in that capacity. I'm just wanting to make sure that everyone understands OPS, as you are noting, the Office of Professional Standards is one of the names that's commonly known in our education world. And I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's not what it is.
OPS is not the Office of Professional Standards. It's someone's not being investigated or something with that. Just for clarity, I just wanted to make sure that.
Right, right. No, no, I, I, I do now recall that term from that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so what, so, because it may be a way that we could create yet another category where the incentive is there because the pay is in alignment with the base pay of a full-time teacher, just without the benefits.
We, we can certainly look at options and we're open to whatever we can do to help bring on qualified folks into the district. And as we know, we've, we've got opportunity up, up and coming that we hope to potentially have some salary increases that would also be of help.
Reduce this problem?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, sir. Two things real quick. What about the, those employees that we have who are in a classroom and they're, let's say it's the general knowledge test, they're just haven't quite passed yet. What's the turnaround time from they pass the test to they go from "sub," quote unquote, to certified teacher?
If they go, what, if, once they pass their exam, provided that's the only thing that is missing, it has, it goes through the state. Once that information is given to the state, Department of Ed, Florida Department of Education, the Certification Office, once they verify it, they will let the district know that they've now moved that person into either a professional certificate, if that's all that was left, or that they have extended or they're back onto their temporary certificate to be able to work as a full teacher. Once we receive that information, we can move them into the teaching position, provided they're in a vacancy at the time that they're filling.
I see, okay.
Yeah, you can give a.
We, we also have a partnership that we just developed with USF where they have online courses that assist with the test preparation for the GK. So, right now, our partnership with USF, we have reached, we have reached out to all of our folks that need that GK, but also anybody who is due to have their GK completed by the end of this year. We have already reached out to them. And as a district, we are paying for one of those courses. So, math tends to be the one that most people struggle with. So, if they had a choice, they could choose to take the math online class through USF and, and the district would pay for it. The only thing that we ask them to promise is that they will take their GK test by March. They have to give us a date certain that they're actually going to sign up. They have to show us their sign up, that they're taking the test in GK. So, that's something we're working on because we want to retain those people and keep them on.
Okay, thanks, Wendy. Mr. Chair, if I may, one more?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
Dr. Brown, we obviously have a, a kind of talent pool out there of teachers who are retiring, who, and I've heard from a few of them who are, who are leaving us or have left us. And then, they, they would step back into the classroom the next day as a sub, even at, even at current pay rates. But is it, is it a board policy or is it, is it a state policy that they have to go through the hiring process from square one?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's a state policy of how they have to be hired back into the system.
Okay. Yeah, I, to, to explain, because I wasn't very clear on what I'm talking about. I, I've had teachers come to me and say, hey, I, I know we have a sub shortage, I'd be happy to do it, but I don't want to have to like, gather my transcripts from college 35 years ago and, and so on and so forth. And it's just, it, it seems like a, a burden that, but if we can't reduce that burden and there's nothing we can do about it.
If they're, if they've left newly for transcripts and all, but they do have to go through a hiring process. It's a, it's a different process that we have to go through with them. And they don't have to go through the training because we can waive the training for someone who has certification. There's different qualifications, but we do have to have them move into, out of that role and into the actual teaching part. We can look at that as a fact of if it's about transcripts and all, if their, their record would still be with the district, we wouldn't necessarily, that doesn't get terminated and thrown out the day after they leave or anything.
Sorry, Dr. Brown. I, I was only using that as an example of, you know, you got to go gather all the paperwork, you got to go fingerprint a drug test, like everything that a 25-year-old candidate would have to do.
That's right. The, the law requires us to fingerprint, drug test, or whatever. The, the onboarding process has to go through and that's in the sub piece. And we have to have a waiver that we show that they have their certification so they don't have to do the testing, you know, the, the training part.
If they retire, they have to sit out a year anyway. So, they have to sit out a year. They cannot collect off of us and come back and work for us. They have to sit out an, an entire year. And we term out fingerprints after 30 days. So, we have a policy in our department that anybody has broken service for more than 30 days, we re-fingerprint because we do not house those after 30 days. So, they would have to still go through that process. And as you know, that's the Jessica Lunsford Act that we have to comply with.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clon. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is to continue our discussion from the last workshop around the, the role and purpose of the Finance Committee. And I've got some handouts. So, I think most of you received, Vice Chair Messenger did a great job of pulling together from a number of different, a, a number of other districts, including the one from Sarasota that Mr. Minor distributed last meeting. I, I did take the opportunity to speak with Chair Ziegler at Sarasota about their experience with their Finance Committee and, and what she would do different with regards to, to how it is structured. And so, what I have, what I have passed out is just a, a, a basic sample of, and I don't know that I got all the pages. This is a, a sort of a sample of different components, including the sort of introduction for the Sarasota one. And then you also have a packet of, of bios and CVs from individuals that have expressed an interest that I'm aware of in, in, in serving on the Finance Committee. When the, when the sample goes around. When the, when the sample goes around, you know, perhaps Vice Chair Messenger, since you, you really dove into this and, and put together some information, would you like to sort of start us off with what you learned from looking at the other, the other districts?
Sure. I just, I, I guess what I really gathered was that each county really did do a lot of, did several things differently. I, from the ones that I read, I thought that Sarasota counties seemed to have the... I didn't get any of that stuff. I only got this one. This is all I have been given. Thank you. Sarasota County, to me, seemed to cover the most ground, I guess should say. The other ones that I had found seemed like they were far more specific towards maybe one or two topics, where Sarasota counties seemed a lot broader, like it covered more topics, which seemed like more of what you had been wanting. Because I, I, they had, it seemed like more of the advisory role, which is seemed like that's what you were aiming towards.
I think they may have included a little bit more of, also, I think Sarasota included a component which we've already charged the Audit Committee with in their charter.
You're right. They had something about audits. They had one, one little piece. I, I mean, that's only one piece. I agree with you on that. That, I mean, that would be something to tweak if we decided to go this route. But to me, I thought that they seemed to cover, you know, they have a sales tax, they covered the sales tax. They would cut, they covered the millage. They covered reviewing financial reports and statements. You're right, we don't need the audits portion. But then that maybe could give more leeway to the things that you found, that you wanted to dive a little bit further into, which would be the financial reports and statements portion, and, and relieve that duty from them. And I, I know that we would want to tweak this because I know that Superintendent wants to be left out of it.
And that was the recommendation from Sarasota, that they would do it differently.
And I think that that's appropriate, you know, and I think she thinks that's appropriate. And, and so I think that part, you know, but to me, I felt like this was the avenue that I could see us going down, just because it, I feel like it had the depth that we needed without impeding the Superintendent in her job. And this, this had that level of, I think, where we have the oversight and the advisory that we want without micromanaging or slowing the process down for her and her staff. So, it's, to me, I, 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 when it comes to the purpose and duties portion, I lean, I think, more towards how Sarasota is doing it. But I did notice that the structure and how members were chosen were different in every single one of these counties. And I think that that's something that really needs to have a lot of conversation as well, because they all were so different. And for instance, I think one of the counties, they had, and this is also how the Children's Services Advisory Board is set up, they had specific people for each, I think it was Brevard County. They had specific people. For instance, they had one person from the Legal Women Voters, one person from the PTA, one person from their, their union. I mean, I'm not saying we have to follow that, but I'm saying that that is one way that they did it. Another county had a committee, well, this is, a committee to choose the committee members, so that it's a double committee. I'm not sure about that, but it seems like a committee for a committee. I don't know about that. But there, that was another way that another board did it. I think I saw one where it was like gave specifics on, and I'd have to find which county this was, gave specifics on the makeup of the committee, whereas they wanted educators and parents, and it had a certain number of each one of those groups, but not... Yeah, I said, I'm sorry, if this is in Brevard Counties as well, sorry. Brevard County said that they wanted two members that are parents or guardians. They wanted some people that had backgrounds in education and planning and business and finance and law, architecture, construction, technology, or security. And, and so that they kind of guided it in that way. But I think, and they also wanted it, a public announcement, so that it was made clear to the community that, you know, this was, this, there was going to be selection, and that the community was able to apply for this if they fell into one of these categories that the board could chose as important for this committee. So, that was just another way that I saw they did it. You know, I just, I, I just, there was a variety of ways, I guess, is, is what I wanted to point out, is, and as we go forward, I don't know which way we want to go, but I just wanted to show all the different ways the county, the different counties were going, so...
And I think, I think some of the, Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mrs. Messenger, for providing all of us copies of different ways that some districts have approached this issue. I was particularly taken as far as our obligations to be met in accordance with the referendum by the Pinellas County way of going about this, in that they, in fact, title it the Independent Citizens' Referendum Oversight Committee, which we have pledged to do. And other than changing, you know, some dates, it pretty much covers everything that I think that we would want this independent Citizens' Referendum Oversight Committee, you know, to be doing. I like the way that they talk about, you know, the membership. I've heard it expressed by this board that we don't want it to be, and I agree, I think Mrs. Messenger at some point said she didn't want to have political appointees, you know, my, appointing somebody or other board members, but to, you know, divorce that, and to have the appointments made by, you know, organizations that are active in our community and have interest in public education. And I, I like that. It might be that we not have the, the exact equivalent in our community, but I, I think it represents a broad, you know, spectrum of interest that of interest and ability. I, I think they'd all be quite qualified to, you know, select someone to, you know, be on the committee. It doesn't necessarily have to be a member of, of that organization. It might be some of those that have expressed interest in this Finance Committee, which doesn't exist. But I like the idea that it would include someone appointed by the Legal Women Voters, someone by the, you know, parent organizations. They have Pinellas County of PTAs, the Pinellas County Education Foundation, the Realtors Organization. They, they have something called Concerned Organizations for Quality Education for Black Students. They have something called Pinellas County SAC Associations, Pinellas County Economic Development Council. It, I think having, you know, seven as a member of it makes it, I think that's a very workable, you know, number. And they have, I think, you know, the, the way they describe their responsibilities and meetings, I, I think is very thought out, and I think very adaptive to what we would be doing, you know, here in Manatee County. We want, I, I think that by divorcing us, you know, from the direct appointment, I think that adds credibility to the committee. They're not political appointees, or they're, they're somebody else's judgment of who would best serve it. And they're not persons that are subject to the pleasure of the Superintendent in terms of appointment or continuation on there. They are very independent persons that I think is very important to the community, and I think very important to everybody on this board. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. I think, I think in regards to that, what, what, if, if you look at the, the, the counties other than Sarasota, their purpose for putting together these committees were, were, were all different. You know, I think Pinellas, when you look at the makeup of what Pinellas was doing, it was, it was strictly a referendum oversight. And, and what they were doing is they were, they were bringing in stakeholders from a, a majority of organizations to, to build, you know, to build the referendum, where I think Sarasota, and then Brevard was, Brevard was really looking for an Oversight Committee to oversee, oversee the board, only reporting to the board. It, it covered, you know, many areas. So, you know, I felt that, that what, what you had presented, Mr. Minor, which was, was Sarasota's, seemed to be more closely aligned with, with the thoughts that I had with regards to creating an advisory Finance Committee who could, who could work with the board and lend us their, their varied expertise around sort of a myriad of our financial issues, to both be engaged with us and, and to sort of help with, with the, the challenges that we have. So, perhaps if we look at what, what I, what I put together, which was really just editing out the purpose of the Sarasota Advisory Committee, if you look at the, the sample, does, does the purpose, as, as I've edited what we got from Sarasota that Mr. Minor shared, does, does that make sense with regards to a financial advisory committee to help us sort of narrow it down? Do you not have this?
I do have that copy.
I guess I can call it up on my computer. Because what I was, because what I was trying to do is just, as I mentioned in our reorganization meeting, just, just hearing in the community some of the, you know, I'll say criticisms or, or comments, that sort of helped me formulate what, what would be beneficial to us to make up for any, you know, any knowledge, experience, insight that, that, that we as a board could benefit from. This is not unlike universities, colleges of business, foundations, put together advisory committees to, to help sort of sort out and vet issues that are before us, and also to sort of help validate what, you know, the, the direction that we're taking and the way in which we are improving and can continue to improve, you know, our fiscal management, in addition to meeting the requirements that we put in the language of the referendum. And so, if, if, if we look at, you know, citizens base, so oversight, review of financial reports, and, and monitoring the use of the referendum revenue, specific to the, the special referendum, does that make sense? I mean, I think that's, that's, to me, that's one of the basic tenets of, of, of what I was thinking we were committing to in the referendum. You know, the, with regards to, they have in oversight, review of financial reports, and, and monitoring the use of the sales tax revenue. The sales tax revenue is, has already, the Audit Committee's already been charged with that. But, but, so that I think we, we've got covered. But with regards to financial reports, you know, a variety of financial reports, I'm going to be sharing something with you this evening, or I'll, I'll just give it to you by the end of this meeting, that, that, that we will have to respond to the, the legislature about. And I think that there are areas where we could benefit from community experts, business leaders, experts in finance, that can, can assist us in, in, in moving forward with our continued improvement. I mean, what we're really looking for, I'm, what I'm envisioning is a, a committee of, of leaders in the community that have finance experience, you know, that have, you know, graduate degrees in finance, that are successful, uh, business leaders, that, that can provide that assistance to us. And then in addition, in working with the Audit Committee, through the process, I believe they'll validate a lot of the things that we're doing right and, and, and the improvements that we make. It should be a continuous process. And, and in that, that way, I think it lends transparency to what we're doing, not that we're not transparent. But I mean, it really, it really opens it up and provides a forum with which to, to provide insight that, that we may not have thought of and, and the administration may not have thought of. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I won't repeat myself, but my, as I've read through the Sarasota County operating procedures, the, the only thing that jumped out to me was continued references to the Superintendent, and there's even one about staff. Superintendent's shall assign staff. So, as, as I kind of said at the last meeting, I, I think there should be a, there should be a committee that reports to the board.
Yeah, and you see, I took it out of the sample. And that, and that's what Chairman Ziegler mentioned. She said, you know, that's not working well for them.
Yeah, exactly. So...
And, and I, and I think, much like the Audit Committee, there's, there's, there's a clear role. What that also does is it allows us, remember, we're, we're the final authority. So, so we are empowered to provide the direction to that committee. And if the Superintendent or, or, or her deputies come to us and say, hey, you know, there's, there's, there's creep into the Superintendent's areas, then we have the authority to, to rein that in. And, and, you know, we do that outside. Now, what I will tell you, you know, and it, that, I never envisioned anybody being the chairman. I mean, I always envisioned that we would, we would create the Finance Committee, much like the Audit Committee. The committee would then, you know, elect a chairperson and a vice chair, and we would provide the, the framework and the purpose, and allow them to work through, you know, operating procedures for them to meet the charge. I think we have some short-term needs. And then I think we will, we will continuously identify areas that we may want them to provide assistance or to, to serve as a sounding board for us, and, and helping us to vet out our own decisions.
Okay. Yeah, no, and I, I support the idea of the committee. I have no problem with any of the members whose resumes we've, we now have. In fact, a couple of the resumes look like they'd be really great candidates for opening the Audit Committee.
And there are a few that aren't there, like Dr. Novak, whom I, who I believe you know from a LeCom.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's, I mean, this, and I, this document seems pretty simple and clear about an initial, you know, responsibilities. The only, on item number two, the initial short-term charge, provide assistance in CFO search and selection. I think, I think that's a great idea, just to come back to my original point, as long as that feedback comes through us as board members.
Totally. I mean, what, the, the only thing I, I put out there is for discussion, you know, when the, when the Superintendent narrows down the candidates...
That's when they would step in.
It may be beneficial to, to select one or more of the committee members, or have the committee meet with them, much, much like a, a, a search committee that, that, that corporations do, or even universities and colleges. When you narrow it down, you, you actually bring those candidates in, and it may be a social setting, and, and bring them in to, to mingle with community leaders. So, this would be one opportunity, since we, we are already in a CFO search, to have experienced, you know, finance people and employers to just take a look at it and just give us, you know, their feedback. I mean, I will tell you, we went through a process in, in searching for a, a, a dean of the College of Business at USF St. Petersburg. And while the search committee identified what they thought was the ideal candidate, when that candidate was put in a room full of community leaders, the candidate... leaders, the candidate couldn't interact with them. And, and so that's an op, that's an example of how you can, you can take advantage of an advisory board that has a specific focus in a specific area to, to see what they think. And, and whether, knowing the challenges we have, you know, which candidate may, may be most likely to succeed in that position.
Okay.
So it's not to be the, the chooser of it, you know, just to provide feedback if we choose to use them in that way.
And that also makes a lot of sense to me. I just want to, the, the other one that just gives me a little bit of pause is the last bullet point under purpose, which is communicating and reporting to the public as needed.
Where are you?
This is the last bullet point on, on your document, under purpose. Communicating and reporting to the public as needed.
Oh, that was, that was, that was a Sarasota.
Oh, okay.
That, that was a Sarasota. I, what I, I didn't, I didn't edit too much out because I wanted us to have a discussion about it.
Gotcha.
And, and no, I agree. I mean, that, I don't think it needs to be in the purpose.
On message, okay.
Like I said, their chair doesn't think this is a perfect document, I assure you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments?
Just one, if we could, at your approval, I don't want to say table, because this is a workshop, but if we could push the last item we haven't gotten to to the next workshop, because I'd love to take a quick break.
That's easy enough to do, because it's not really, I mean, what I can do is I could, I can just send out to you.
That'd be great.
My thoughts about areas for, for, for each of you to, to assist.
Yeah, I mean, just looking, glancing, they seem to make a lot of sense, but I just, you know.
Okay.
Just need a moment before we start.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I know the time is really tight and baby's got to eat over here, so.
Right.
But, um...
Yeah, my, my goal was to end at 5:30.
Okay. I love that goal. But I'm just, two things. So I want to understand that this conversation obviously needs to continue, correct? Okay. And then my other question then is, these members that have, have given you...
That's not a finite list.
Information.
Because I think you have someone that you've been speaking with also.
Oh, I don't know. But I know this was part of the, part of the meeting tonight, perhaps. So I'm just going to say personally, at this point, like I, this, this has not been made public to the community. So I guess I would ask that if you, first of all, we haven't decided how members are going to be chosen.
Right.
So I don't know if we can really have this. That's, I guess, your purview. But it seems like it would be a concern if it was not made available to the public beforehand.
Yeah, the, the purpose for providing those is just to give you an idea of the individuals that have offered to assist.
And I appreciate it.
Some of their backgrounds. I, I expect that what I will ask for this evening is at least a, an agreement or a consent to create a Finance Committee around a, a, a initial sort of statement of purpose. And to basically agree that the board, through a process of evaluation, will appoint the members sometime in the future. Hopefully not too far into the future, because I think it's important, given the timeline that we're on leading up to March.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'm sorry. I needed to mention something very quickly.
Okay.
Under the initial short-term charge, I know that, yes, in colleges, they, they may do that. But our turnaround is, is a lot quicker. To provide assistance in the Chief Financial Officer search, that really is creeping. That's creeping on to the responsibility of the Superintendent, no matter who that person is.
That's fair enough.
Don't mind having a gathering. You want to have, say, on a certain day, we, you want them to meet that individual. But the Chief Financial Officer is, is a position that the Superintendent is, is responsible by statute to hire and bring before the board. So we've already ended our posting. We, just to give you an update, I think we have over thirty applicants. We are required, there are four veterans, we're required to interview veterans, so there will be. And right now, Mr. Serrana and is, and I are looking at those applications to filter that down. There are a number of people who applied that I'm not sure they actually knew what position they applied for. Their qualifications do not meet the level of a Chief Financial Officer. But I, whatever you will want to do with the Finance Committee, we will have our Finance Department there to supply anything they're asking for. And we are ready to move forward. Just need to remind the board that March starts staffing plan by statute. We have to have that voted on and completed by the first board meeting in March. So that is the initial, that, that, that kind of starts the clock for us moving to get to that point where we start our truth and millage and, and how we move through that whole budgeting process.
Thank you.
We have some Hail Middle School dancers out performing in the breezeway.
Great.
And also board members, please go to the wetstone.
No, 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 no. Wait a minute. I got a question.
Okay. Mr. Clon.
Okay. Because I see you with that hammer. You're getting hammer crazy. Seriously, is the CFO position one we have to vote on?
Yes.
Okay, well, you know my criteria.
And the criteria still meets the same criteria.
I've aired this before.
Yes.
And I will not vote for anyone I don't agree with or haven't met. So I'm just telling you that, as I've told you before.
Yes.
And saying it publicly, so it's on the record. Okay.
There's a lot at stake in this hire, so I think.
Absolutely.
I think we all understand that, and we, we understand the Superintendent's role. So with that, I will adjourn the workshop and let's go see the dancers and feed the progeny.